Good evening. It is my pleasure to call to order the December 2nd Board Reorganization Meeting of the Mathacton Board of School Directors. Please rise for the pledge.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, by way of attendance, we have the three of the four board members who should be sitting here, sitting here. We are missing Mr. Navarrette. The purpose of the Board Reorganization Meeting is to officially announce the election of the newly elected or reelected members of the Board, to swear in those members who have not already been sworn, and to organize the Board for the coming year by electing a permanent President and Vice President. The Board will not take up the regular legislative business of the Board at the reorganization meeting. Immediately following the reorganization meeting this evening, we will hold a regular meeting of the Board for that purpose. I will now take public comment on Board action items. If you have a comment, please approach the podium. If you have a comment, please approach the podium.
Jim Malick, Warseth. So I understand this, when is the election of the officers going to take place? Now or at the next meeting?
I stated the purpose of the meeting.
Right. I don't see anybody here, so are we going to, are you going to vote on officers now or at the next meeting? Meaning, if you're going to vote on it now, make comments about the election of the officers. See what I mean?
You can continue with your comments.
So you can't tell me whether or not you're going to vote during this meeting on election of the officers, any other positions?
The agenda so published determines that the election of the President and Vice President will be made this evening at the reorganization meeting.
Which is the next meeting or this meeting? Okay, so the answer to my question is yes, the officers are going to be elected during this meeting, right? So I can make my comment about what I think about the election, right? Okay, good. I'm assuming that, and we don't know because we're getting to make comments before anything actually happens, that President Larsonese will probably go for another term. Based on that assumption, I'll make comments. I don't know. See, normally the way we do it in Warseth is we get to that action item, then we get the comment on the action item when you guys take your vote, motion, vote, comment. So this is why I disagree with the way you do things. But, I don't know whether you realize it, but you, Miss Temporary President, are a public servant. You serve us, not the other way around. And to deflect an easy question, you're not doing your job. You're not. But either was the Board President, who refuses to answer questions at public meetings from taxpayers and residents. It means that you don't call people from the public disgusting, or wax, or shoot them the finger. You're supposed to respect people from the public and not do, I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about Board members in general. It means that you got to follow Board Policy 011. You familiar with Board Policy 011? Can't answer that question or no? Continue, you mean you don't want to hear my, you don't want to give me an answer as to whether you're familiar with Board Policy 011? See, we should be in a courtroom because your honor would have you answered that question. You must, according to Board Policy 011, engage the community by seeking input and to promote open, honest, and respectful dialogue among the Board staff and the community. Since the President's not here to give me her platform for her next year, two, whatever it is, I can't tell you whether or not she's going to let us answer questions in her next term. So one of my points to you is, we should be able to ask questions, get answers, and have a dialogue with the Board members. Otherwise, we only have one way to get information, and that's through your ridiculous right-to-know process. Now you guys don't even answer requests. You're spending boatloads of money for nothing. So, my question would be, will the new President agree to answer public questions? I know, I got 10 seconds. You're good at Board Policy 0, what is it, 903?
Thank you for your comments, sir. Are there any other comments on Board action items? Thank you, seeing none. We are now going to elect a temporary President, who must be an incumbent who did not run for reelection. I am going to nominate Mary Hull to be temporary President. May I have a second to that nomination?
Yes, I second.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I will close the nominations. By show of hands, all those in favor of Mary Hull as temporary President? Okay, the temporary President is Mary Hull. The first order of business is to announce the certificates of election for all newly elected and reelected members. From the Mathacton School District, School Director, four-year term, we have Kim Aubrey Larsonese, 4,878, Andrea Reese, 4,807, Samira Purdue, 4,520, and Andrew S. McGinnis, 4,572. Oh, and Paul Winters, 4,560. The next order of business is the administration of the oath of office. Judge Thomas P. Rogers will do the honor. Ms. Aubrey Larsonese, could you please rise? We'll go right down the road. Mr. Winters?
I (inaudible). I solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the Commonwealth, and I will discharge duties of my office.
We'll go right down the road.
The people that stood by me four years ago are willing to support me again.
I (inaudible).
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 Samira Purdue.
(inaudible)
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 Samira Purdue.
(inaudible)
I (inaudible).
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 Andrew McGinnis.
(inaudible)
I, Drew McGinnis, solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and I will discharge duties of my office.
Absolutely. Okay. Absolutely. Okay, at this point, I will open the floor to nominations for the Office of President.
I'd like to, oh. I nominate Kim Aubrey Larsonese.
I second. Are there any other nominations for President? Does anyone have any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing that there are no additional nominations for President, can I have a motion to close nominations? I'm sorry, Ms. Reese, and a second to close nominations, Mr. Winters? Okay, by a show of hands, all of those in favor of Kim Aubrey Larsonese as President? Okay, that passes eight to zero. And the President is Kim Aubrey Larsonese. Okay, thank you, everyone. At this point, I'll open the floor to nominations for the Office of Vice President. Are there any other, any nominations for Vice President at this time, Mr. Winters?
Liz Drummond?
Okay, do we have a second? Ms. Hull? Okay. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to close nominations. Ms. Reese and Mr. McGinnis, second. Okay, all those in favor of Liz Drummond as Vice President? Okay, the motion carries eight-zero. Congratulations. Okay, so prior to this reorganization meeting, my, as Board President, I surveyed the members to their interest in serving in committees of the Board, and as a President now, I've considered that input and am appointing the following. So for our Education Committee, the Chair will be Jen Cancrow. Our Finance Committee, our Chair will be Drew McGinnis. For Property and Transportation, we have Mr. Navarrette. And for Policy, we have Mary Hull. Yes, so our Property Committee will be composed of Ralph Navarrette, Andrea Reese, Mary Hull, and Drew McGinnis. For Education, we have Jen Cancrow, Andrea Reese, Paul Winters, and Samira Purdue. Policy will be Mary Hull, Samira Purdue, Liz Drummond, and myself. And Finance will be Drew McGinnis, Ralph Navarrette, Paul Winters, and Jen Cancrow.
I believe, Madam President, the next order of business is to appoint the representative for the MCIU, and that appointment is to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Ryan, and that is till June 30th of 2020.
Okay. All right, are there any nominations for the, actually, I'm sorry, Ms. Montaigne, is this a, some, it's a voting item, so there should be a nomination and a second? Okay, so is there a nomination for someone to be our MCIU representative? I'd like to nominate Andrea Reese. Is there a second, Ms. Drummond? Any other nominations for the MCIU representative? Seeing none. Are there any comments? Mr. Winters?
I was lucky enough to serve, and I know that Mr. Ryan was lucky enough to serve. It's a fantastic position to meet other Board members and find out what's going on, and it's a great, great organization to participate, so I fully support Andrea in that position.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of Andrea Reese as MCIU Representative? Okay, the motion carries eight-zero. And we also need to appoint, or reappoint someone to the North Monco Technical Career Center as Ms. Reese's term expired with her previous term on the Board. Is there any nominations for that position?
I nominate Andrea Reese.
And I will second that nomination. Are there any comments from the Board on that item?
I would just like to say that I would appreciate if you could vote for me for this, and they would like me to stay on as Vice President of the JOC, so you'd be helping them out as well, and go North Monco Tech Career Center.
I was going to say Andrea brings an unbridled enthusiasm for the North Monco Technical Career Center, which I share as her partner on the JOC, and I look forward to serving with her again. Yes, I don't think any of us was interested in trying to take that position from you. Your enthusiasm for it is very apparent. So all those, are there any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of Andrea Reese continuing as our North Monco Representative. Okay, that motion carries eight-zero. And I believe that is all of the appointments that we need to take care of tonight, so at this point, I will open up the floor to courtesy of the floor. Dr. Malick?
Question on the procedure, can you take a motion and a vote with only three Board members? Is that something you can allow to do? Yes, no?
If you're willing to cede part of your four minutes for a response, I'm willing to get you one.
Well, it's either yes or no, basically.
Ms. Montaigne?
During a reorganization meeting or an organization meeting for the December, according to the school code, it is only the voting, the holdover members that can vote, so yes.
So the sunshine law doesn't apply in that situation?
It's the holdover members according to the school code.
I got you. I'm just asking you whether the sunshine law applies in that situation. Do you know that?
My response.
So you don't know, I got it. In your new, in your new term as President, besides smiling as much as you are, which is good, will you answer questions from members of the public at public meetings? Is that something you intend to do for your new term?
Would you like to cede part of your four minutes for a response?
Well, I just need yes or no.
I don't intend on adjusting or changing any of the previous policies.
Yeah, I didn't say, it wasn't so hard. Are members, are general members of the public who are taxpayers and don't have kids in the district, they part of this community? Because my impression from the, I guess the October meeting, is that we're not. This statement was made that, you know, people like myself, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Bickleman are not really part of the community. You consider us to be part of the community? I'll cede for a yes or no.
Absolutely, I do.
Well, appreciate that. If people think that we're not part of the community, you'd straighten that out, right? I hope. Who's in charge of the right-to-know process here? Are you the Board members?
Dr. Malick, I think you're quite familiar with our right-to-know process here.
That's why I'm asking the question. Because I just want to know who instituted the policy of having two lawyers and a paralegal evaluate every right-to-know request? Was that you? Yes or no? Was that you or the Board? You know when it happened, right? Back in November? Did you know it happened, put it that way? Were you aware that every right-to-know request is being evaluated by, actually, three attorneys now, and a paralegal? Do you know how much money that costs? When you could be using that for education? Maybe you should rethink that. And I guess Mr. Andrews has said over and over again that over the past four years, and you were here for those four years, our ranking in the state has gone from 11 to 59. That's why I asked what your platform is going to be, how you're going to address the fact that under your reign, and these folks who got reelected, we went from 11 to 59. Do you have a plan to rectify that, other than building a school we don't need for 36-plus million dollars, which won't affect that ranking? Do you have a plan?
I'm pretty sure I can articulate that in 14 seconds.
Well, do you have the option to extend time? Did it for Ms. Bickleman, gave her two minutes, right? That's what I call a cop-out. So if I were you, I'd think about it. Think about how you're going to handle the fact that we went from 11 to 59. Thank you.
Dr. Malick. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Dr. Wilkerson.
I'd just like to say that being a school Board member-
I have to ask you to state your name-
Oh, I'm so sorry.
-and municipality.
Ashley Wilkerson, Audubon, Pennsylvania. I'd just like to say that I recognize that being a school Board member is extremely hard work, particularly in Pennsylvania where it's a volunteer position, all of you have lives outside of what you do here, and yet you show up for these meetings and you do it on a volunteer basis, it's unpaid, and it's especially hard in a state like Pennsylvania where our schools are underfunded and where we rank almost last in the country for state funding for public education. So I just want to thank all of you personally for everything that you've already done for our district and for everything that you're going to be doing over these next two or four years, because it's very much appreciated by this community and by our kids and our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wilkerson. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? All right, I will take a motion to adjourn then. Mr. Winters and a second, Ms. Drummond, this reorganization meeting has been adjourned. All right, so at this time, I'm going to call to order our regular Board meeting, the December 2nd regular Board meeting of the Mathacton School District Board of Directors. Please rise once again for the pledge.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
By way of announcements, the public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. By way of attendance, we have all Board members except for Mr. Navarrette in attendance this evening. We had originally scheduled to have some Warseth Elementary School students and staff here for, to be recognized this month as our junior directors and, but because of the weather and the early dismissal today, we're going to be postponing that to a later date. Other recognitions of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we had planned to have three presentations, the Education Foundation, we were planning to have staff recognition, but with the pending whether we're going to reschedule that and recognize them in an upcoming month. And the third one was to discuss the proposed 2020 calendar, specifically January of 2020. So without any further ado, I want to welcome President of the Mathacton Education Foundation, Mr. Beam, and Executive Director Nikki Kralovich to the podium.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby, and welcome new school Board members. It's my pleasure to introduce Nikki Kralvich, let me try that again. It's my pleasure to introduce Nikki Kralvich, our Executive Director, who has a very special report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Beam, thank you, Dr. Zerby, and members of the Board. Welcome, Mr. McGinnis and Mrs. Purdue. Thanks to the generous donors of the Mathacton Education Foundation, we are thrilled to award eight grants to the Mathacton School District for a total of $83,000, $83,596. To qualify for these funds, our innovative educators have gone above and beyond to seek educational opportunities for Mathacton students, research how to best integrate those opportunities into the classroom, and then write a grant application requesting funding. We had a great deal of fun surprising these educators with their grant awards over the last couple of weeks. Let me to tell you what they're for. From Mrs. Monter and all of our elementary school librarians, we are awarding $23,952 for dedicated iPads for the elementary library STEM maker spaces. Thanks to Mrs. Cherry, the librarian at Warseth, we are awarding money for STEM lessons in the libraries. Thanks to Dr. Harmer at Eagleville, we're awarding $2,212 for the 24 game to sharpen critical math skills. Thanks to Mrs. McGrath at Eagleville Elementary School, we're awarding Breakout EDU, which is a game-based learning platform. Thanks to Mr. Walton at the high school, we're awarding $3,800 for DNA molecular separation instructional lab kits. Thanks to Mr. Brown at the high school, we are awarding- Thanks to Mr. Brown at the high school, we are awarding, excuse me, $22,400 for engineering laptops for computer-aided design and $17,949 for a CNC machine and training for the Methacton Education, I'm sorry, Methacton High School Engineering Course. And finally, thanks to Mrs. Gorla and Mr. Permar at Skyview, we are awarding $11,700 for outdoor education for need-based scholarships. If it's okay with you, we would love to do the check presentation. If all of our educators who are part of these grant awards could come down and all of the Methacton students that are still here in the audience, please join us for the photo. We'd love to have you.
Thank you again.
Do you want to take a ticket back?
Thanks.
At your place, while people are exiting, I just want you to know at your place, there is a draft schedule in front of you. That is a schedule for the 2020 meeting schedule of the Board of Directors. So that includes work sessions, voting meetings, or called regular meetings, and then all the committees that are general committees of the board. So what we normally do in order to make this conducive and so that we, when we publish it in the newspaper, we don't have to keep republishing, is we want to give you until early January to get back to me on any of the meeting dates, specifically those of you that are new chairs or new to committees. So there may be some issues with some of the dates on the calendar. You want to get them, any questions or concerns, to Mary Mandia, the school board secretary, by the first of January, if you could do that. But for business this evening, it's important that we do set the dates for January to provide proper public notice for the meetings. And I'll just go over what I have in front of you so that everybody is, can read along. So we have a policy committee meeting recommended for a schedule on January 6th. Then on January 7th, because, and just so you know, our typical board meetings, the work session is usually on the third Tuesday of the month and the voting meeting is the fourth Tuesday of the month. But please know that we're recommending, as a result of the pending presidential primary election and as part of the Act One budgetary process, that we're recommending January 7, which is a Tuesday evening, to be the special meeting, both a special meeting and a work session for the proposed preliminary budget. So again, that is not the third Tuesday of the month, but we're recommending that in order to adhere to the Act One process, we need to present to you and you need to either approve or not approve and take certain actions on the 7th in order for us to maintain within the rules. So again, it's out of sequence, but not to belabor the part, January 7th is a recommended date. January 8th, we have an education committee meeting scheduled. January 13th, we're proposing the schedule of the finance committee meeting. Now, I did receive word after sending this in an email to all the board members that January 15th, which is a property and transportation committee meeting as listed on this draft, it is recommended from Mr. Navarrette that that be moved to the 22nd of January. So unless anyone, you know, has objections to that, he will not be available for the 15th. And that is the last meeting before the, all the bids are due in February for the 2020 summer projects. So if you need to check your calendars right now, if you happen to be on the property and transportation committee, if the 22nd works for you, great. If it's a major struggle, I'll need to know. And then the last item is January 21st, which is also in sequence for the Act One budgetary process. So again, that date is technically out of our normal sequence. So what I'd like to be able to do is ask for any discussion or recommendations on any of these items for January. If we have to make any changes, we can, you know, make those decisions and then we need to vote for these, for the calendar so that I can publish it as we typically would. So any comments on the proposed dates at this point in time? To my right, Ms. Reese?
On the 22nd, I have a tech center meeting. I can certainly come to property late and I'm okay with that if the other members are okay with that. But I, it shouldn't be terribly long, but I had thought, and I know it was a holiday, Mr. Navarrette had mentioned the 20th, which probably isn't possible because of the holiday. Right? Yeah.
He did mention the 20th, but we didn't think that was a good idea.
I mean, I'm okay with coming a little late to the meeting if the committee is okay, especially now that we have a fourth member of the committee, so I'm okay with that. And I just, I'm sure it is okay for it to be after the regular board meeting, but I'm just asking that it's okay, that it be after the regular board. Okay. All right. Duly noted, I will be late.
Okay. Any other comments on the January dates?
I just wanted to talk about property. So assuming, since we're having property after the regular board meeting, are we then going to move anything forward from that 22nd meeting to the February 25th regular board meeting for action items?
That is the plan. Our goal is, I think the goal of the meeting on the 22nd is to get the most current status report of the bids. So the bids should be coming in by that time or slightly thereafter. So we may or may not have them in time for this January 22nd meeting. So the idea there is really to, if we have anything, to at least start to look at things that we have so long as the deadlines have met and decide at that point if anything needs to be moved on. But my feeling is that the bidding sequence does not line up with any of these dates, so that we're giving the board at least two weeks of review of the items prior to the work session. That was the original plan from the bidding process. Any other comments on the January dates?
Not January, but just since it's about January, we're still good with the February property date. I know we're not voting on that, but just since we're here discussing it, because it's relatively close, which I'm sure in the bidding world, we'll have more to discuss, but...
Yeah, I think if you have questions or concerns about any of these dates by January 1st, if you could email Mary Mandia, that way we can take all that information and consider all the comments and try to make a determination. This isn't a perfect process and it's, you know, dealing with nine, you know, or 10 schedules, technically.
Since the preliminary budget date is probably the most time-critical related to the primary, should we have a rain, a snow date already scheduled so you could publicly propose a snow date without having to show 72 hours or whatever the...
It's 24 hours.
24 hours, okay. I'm just saying, we could throw it on there at that time of year so that, I think we run out of time, right, to have enough 90 days.
So you make that some point, Mr. Winters. While we won't do the advertisement with a make-up date, we will. I'll work with Mr. Booker and we'll come up what the scenario would be if that would so occur. Good point. Any other comments or questions on the January calendar? So I am going to propose then, with the consideration for Mr. Navarrette to change January 15th to January 22nd and have all the other dates as listed there be a motion if a board member so chooses to make that motion. At the time of the agenda, at the end of the meeting. All right? If there's no further comments, that ends guests and presentations.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. So for committee reports, we will not have any this evening. We do not have our student board representatives here. We already heard from the Methacton Education Foundation. And that brings us to communications. Oh, I'm sorry. There is a report in addition to a check presentation. We get a double dose of the Education Foundation. So yep, come on up then.
Thank you. I'll try to keep this brief, but I have a lot of good news. The foundation continues to break records. This fall, we received a record number of grant applications, 15 in total. As you heard during our check presentation, we're able to fund eight of them now. That's a big differential, though. And this differential provides the foundation with a great opportunity. First of all, it highlights that there is so much more the foundation can do here in Methacton. Second, it emphasizes that we need to raise more money to do it. And third, it helps us to raise more money because of the specific programming we can find and we can match specific donors or seek out additional resources to fund those programs. One of those such efforts is, of course, the Apex Awards that you heard about from Mr. Beam last week. It was a great success and brought together people from all over our community. I personally want to thank each of you who attended the Apex Awards. We really enjoyed having you there to support what the foundation is doing. And we're already planning the second annual Methacton Apex Awards for next fall. This will no doubt help us to raise more money to fund more programs in Methacton. To continue to build upon that and help build the Methacton community, we're going to be, we're also planning the Methacton Dodgeball Tournament, as you've heard, for March 21st. To give you a little more details, we're getting closer. This is a district-wide community event that's focused on fun with prizes for the best team name, best cost, and best costumes, to name a few. The tournament is open to Methacton students, teachers, staff, parents, and alumni. Teams will be made...
And board members?
And board members, yes.
And administrators, too.
I believe superintendents are allowed to play. Yes, all Methacton employees are eligible, whether they live in the district or not. Teams will be made up of six to 10 players and maybe co-ed. 70% of the team must be from Methacton. And the divisions will be based on age, so we won't let any adults that might want to play beat up on our youngest players. We also will have sponsorships available for businesses starting at $250. It'll be a great opportunity for our local businesses to raise their profile and support Methacton. So if you know of any local businesses that I should be reaching out to, please don't hesitate to let me know. Registration opens on January 10th, so if you're going to get your team together, start putting it together now. Finally, in another effort to raise money and support more programs in Methacton, I want to let all of you know that tomorrow is Giving Tuesday. Starting at 8:00 a.m., Facebook is matching up to $7 million for donations made to Facebook-approved nonprofits. And as the premier Facebook nonprofit serving the Methacton School District, the foundation is eligible for these matching gifts with no fees. We are so grateful to everybody who donated over the last couple of years and loved having 100% of our school board members donate last year. So if you haven't donated yet to the foundation this year and you would like to, this is a great opportunity to double your donation and take advantage of free money for Methacton. It's these shameless asks that have provided us with the opportunity that we had earlier tonight to award over $83,000 to Methacton. So thank you for taking the time to listen to me. And everyone in the audience, if you'd like to double your donation, tomorrow is a great way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kralovich. Always a pleasure. All right, so for communications, Ms. Kelly, I understand no report this month. And superintendent's report, Dr. Zerby? No, no report from Dr. Zerby. Wow. All right, so at this point, the board will take comments on board action items. Any comments on board action items? All right. May I have a motion to approve the board meeting minutes as attached for the November 19th work session and November 26th board meeting? Ms. Drummond and a second, Ms. Cancro. Are there any comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor. Motion carries eight zero. Fiscal items, Mr. Booker?
The November and December fiscal items will be presented in the January meetings.
All right, thank you. Personnel items, Mr. Regina.
Sure, we have a number of items. We have one change of status for classified. That's the filling of the position that was resignation and retirement of Linda Smith last month. We have one classified uncompensated leave. We have one supplemental contract. This is a retroactive contract for Brad Dale, who comes in over the summer to assist to prep the technology for students and teachers to come back. We have one volunteer item and two community education items.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the personnel items as presented this evening? Mr. McGuinness and a second, Ms. Hall. Are there any comments from the board on these items? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, item I, is that the correct leave of absence time period? 22?
That is correct. It's to serve his tenure as the Teamsters representative.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, all those in favor. Motion carries eight zero. Curriculum and programs, we have nothing this evening. Policy, we don't have any first reading, but we do have 10 policies that are up for a second read. May I have a motion to approve all second-read policies as presented? Ms. Drummond and a second, Ms. Hall. Any comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor. Motion carries eight zero. Gifts and donations, we heard from the Methacton Education Foundation this evening for a number of grants. We don't have any trips listed. We have our board meeting dates, as Dr. Zerby discussed earlier. So may I have a motion to approve the gifts, donations, and board meeting dates for January 2020 as presented? Being interrupted, go ahead.
So it states here, as per the attached listing, with one modification being the January 15th will now be January 22nd date.
Okay. So then let me clarify. May I have a motion to approve the gifts, donations, and revised board meeting dates for January 2020? Ms. Hall and a second, Ms. Reese. Are there any comments from the board? Ms. Hall?
I just want to comment on the Methacton Education Foundation's gifts. I appreciate the generosity and I truly enjoyed watching the presentations through social media, so well done.
Any other comments from the board? Mr. McGuinness?
I would like to second that. Mr. Beam, Mr. Kralovich, thank you so much for everything you do for the students of this school. You are an amazing asset to all of us and we're deeply appreciative. I couldn't thank you more, be more impressed with the numbers that you throw up every month. It's awesome, so thank you.
All right, anyone else then? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor. The motion carries eight zero. We already discussed our dates for board members' calendars. Is there any old business this evening? Any new business? Mr. Winters?
No, just the legislative liaison, I realize, is probably not a voting item, but it's something that I think is really important for the board to... it's something that I think is really important for the board to continue Mr. Ryan's work on that. So hopefully, we can appoint somebody along the way.
That sounded like you might have been volunteering, Mr. Winters. But yes, if anyone is interested in serving as our legislative liaison, that's certainly something that we would like to see filled. I will go through with Dr. Zerby and see if there are any other positions on the board that need to be filled. We did look through and figure out which ones needed to be voted on this evening, so we did take care of that. But on that same topic, I will actually be stepping down as the liaison to the Methacton Education Foundation, and Ms. Hall has generously offered to take on that position, so there's one more for you. So yes, we will probably have a few more to discuss and appoint in the next month or so. Is there anyone else with old business then this evening? Okay. At this point, we'll take courtesy of the floor. Dr. Malik.
I guess you guys can't hear what goes on in the back, but I guess somebody's spouse walked out of here and used profanity towards me on the way out. So I guess we don't get respect from the board, we don't get respect from spouses, and they did it right in front of my camera, which is good for me. So I just figured I'd let you guys know. Is there anyone on the board right now who doesn't have children in the district? Can anybody raise their hand who doesn't have kids in the district? Or do we have nine people now who have kids in the district? Because that's the way it looks like. And, you know, I heard it's a volunteer position. Well, yeah, you get to take care of your kids. It's a great job. Make sure everything's great for your kids. I heard some, in my opinion, some misinformation about public education that I'll straighten out. I was going to talk about something else, but the current budget's $120 million bucks, and that's low. I know it's higher than that. Would you say with our $120 million budget, we're underfunded? Does that statement make any sense to anybody up front?
To clarify, we are underfunded from the state. The state contribution is low.
Well, are we underfunded here at the district? I know you want money from the state. The state's bankrupt because they're paying school districts all kinds of money, right? That's the problem. But I guess my point is, how can you be underfunded when the last four years you've had multimillion-dollar surpluses? Can you explain that to me? How you could be underfunded when your surplus last year was $2.8 million? How's that work? What, you want more money from the state so you can, what, give it back to us? Or spend it? Because, see, my experience with governmental people is when they get more money, they just spend it, like you did with our surplus. You use the surplus to put it into the capital fund, to be used for projects, so we don't get it back. So I don't know how you can make a statement that we're underfunded when we have four years in a row of multimillion-dollar surpluses. Can you straighten me out on that one, or no? I guess not. Do you know how much it costs to educate one kid here at this district right now? I'll give you the low number. It's $23,000. $23,000. If you have two kids, $46,000. Nobody that I know of is paying $46,000 in property taxes. They're not paying $20,000. Most aren't even paying $10,000. Most people with kids in the district are paying $6,000 to $7,000. And if you have two, three kids, that adds up to, what, $50,000, $60,000, $70,000? Well, how do we fund things when the people who are getting the education are only putting in $6,000, $7,000, and it's costing the district $46,000? How do we generate that? I mean, I know you think it's a joke, but I don't think it's a joke, really. The people who pay for it are people like myself, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Bickelman, don't have kids in the district. Most of your money comes from us, doesn't come from you guys, because you're the ones that are putting a drain on the system. You're being subsidized by us. So I think to sit there and smirk at us and laugh and dismiss us, it's just not a way to treat people. You know, I think you should review Board Policy 011 on how you treat the public. So just think about it.
Thank you, Dr. Malik. Maybe sometime we can have a discussion about how public education works. Anyone else with public comment on board action? Oh, I'm sorry, with courtesy of the floor. Okay, seeing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Ms. Reese?
Since I'm here after four years, and I didn't comment why my family was not here. My family chose not to be here for many reasons, but one of which is I do not sit at this table and give up hours of my time for my children. I sit here for hours of my time for all Methacton children, and I will not have a member of the public insinuate otherwise. In fact, my children suffer at the hand of me sitting here, as they spend many evenings putting themselves to bed, doing their homework alone, getting rides from other people. So I will not have a member of the public berate me in a personal manner. It is my pleasure to sit up here for all the Methacton children. Any member of the public would like to check his facts. When I made a very difficult decision to close a school that would eventually be at the benefit of all children and all staff and all community members, my own children were redistricted. So it's a pleasure to sit here, but what I will not do for four more years is be berated personally.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Any other closing comments before we adjourn? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn then. Ms. Reese, second, Mr. McGuinness. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.